May 19, 2025 to order. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod.
Present.
Commissioner Newell.
Present.
Commissioner Arnett.
Present.
Hey, we have a full house here. The applicant today is Barbecue Plus LLC doing business as Barbecue Hut Restaurant, 1147 North Rosella Road, Hoffman Estates, Illinois 60169. The petitioner here? Come on up. Just want to identify yourselves for the record.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name's William Chen. My wife, Fiona Form.
Right.
Yeah, we present a barbecue hut.
Does anybody on the commission have a question? For the petitioner? Okay, is everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions, anybody in the public?
I do.
Yes. Okay, public.
How long have you been in business now?
How long?
At that location?
Uh, we...
Since May 1st.
May 1st.
Wasn't someone else also at that location? Was it not you?
Uh, we take over from the, uh, the other, uh...
Previous owner.
Yeah.
Okay. How long were they there, do you remember?
Eleven years.
That's what I thought. That's... I know you guys were out. The business had been there for so long. Just curious as to why now liquor license, but now I know why. Thank you.
Do you have any questions of the Liquor Commission or the Board?
Gary Palafis has.
Oh, Trusty Palafis.
Question from the audience. Um, do you make your dishes spicy? Because I love spicy.
You like spicy.
Yeah, both. I mean spicy, yeah.
Okay. I live by Gogumah, so I need more places to go, so...
You can come to try.
Yeah. Anytime.
All right, I'm there. That was it.
Anyone else? Do you have any questions of the Village Board? No?
No.
Okay. Chair accept a motion to release a license to petitioner?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. We want to call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner McLeod.
Aye.
Commissioner Newell.
Aye.
Commissioner Arnett.
Aye.
Motion carried. Um, good luck with everything and, um, Chair accept a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
The motion was second. Any discussion? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I call the second board meeting of the month of May to order on May 19, 2025. Can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Stanton.
Present.
Trusty Arnett.
Present.
Trusty Kinnane.
Present.
Trusty Mills.
Present.
Trusty Newell.
Present.
Trusty Palafis.
Present.
Mayor McLeod.
Present. Can everybody please rest? Trusty Stanton, you want to listen on the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Trusty Stanton.
My pleasure.
Move on to public comment. Item number three, do you have anybody who wants to comment? Mr. O'Malley?
Yes, somebody just waved their hand.
Okay, come on up. Just go to the microphone, identify yourself, name and address for the record and we'll listen to you.
My name is Bonnie Waznoski. My husband Mark and I live at 1620 Highland Boulevard in Hoffman Estates for the last 39 years. I thank you all for the opportunity to address this board for these concerns that we have. We were made aware of a discount for seniors for our garbage collection at about the savings of around $13 a month, and that's a total of about $156 a year. In our house, that's two trips to the grocery store. When we applied for this discount on March 20th, we were somewhat shocked to learn that even though we are entitled to this benefit, that there's a condition attached to it. And that condition being that the 65-gallon tote that we've been using all this time had to be exchanged for a 35-gallon tote. I'm just curious to know if this is a policy that is in effect in surrounding suburbs in Schaumburg, Arlington Heights, Palatine, Rolling Meadows, any surrounding suburbs that has the same kind of policy. We're not sure as to why this condition is attached to a benefit that seniors are seem to be entitled to. I contacted Groot about this and was informed that this is not a Groot policy, that this is something that's worked out at the village level. I'm not sure how accurate the information I received was, but it seems that somebody somewhere thinks that just because you're over 65, you have less garbage. Well, this might be true in some cases. It's certainly not true in all cases, and it's definitely not true in our case. I believe this policy to be presumptuous, and it does not take into consideration many circumstances that may exist. We had an occurrence on our house, at our house on May 7th involving this smaller tote that necessitated Groot to come out and have to do a special pickup at our home. And even though there were other circumstances involved with this incident, I don't think this would have happened had we had a larger tote to begin with. We've used this 35-gallon tote for almost two months but are seriously considering reverting back to the larger tote, meaning that we would have to forfeit a benefit that we are entitled to. Three bags barely fit into the smaller tote. When we applied for this, I had voiced that concern and was informed that anything that doesn't fit into the tote can just be put on the ground next to the tote and the collectors would pick it up and, you know, with the regular garbage. Has it ever been considered that these bags, if they're put out at night that contain food, get broken into by rodents and skunks and everything else, leaving a mess in the morning? It's also an inconvenience that could become a hazard. In addition to having to taking this tote to the curb, as we normally would, we now have to carry bags, which could be heavy. I'm not sure how this is going to work in the winter when snow and ice cover our driveways and sidewalks. That could result in a much more hazardous situation. Therefore, we respectfully request and would greatly appreciate the reconsideration of this policy. If a senior is entitled to a discount, give them the discount. It's, it doesn't make any sense that conditions have to be applied to something that a senior is entitled to. Perhaps you can give seniors a choice. If they need to keep their 65-gallon tote, that's fine. If a 35-gallon tote would suit their needs easily, then that would be acceptable. At the very least, I don't know if anybody here or somebody at Groot can explain and give us a reason as to why this policy is in place and the first, this policy isn't is in place in order to take advantage of a discount that seniors might be entitled to. I just don't understand the reasoning behind it. We would appreciate any follow-up or action that might be taken regarding our concerns. If you would care to contact us, we'd be happy to leave you our email addresses or phone numbers. And we thank you again for your attention and for considering our request and for the opportunity to bring this to your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pape, if you want to get their number, John's our garbage guru. Do you have any insight on this, John?
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, so the complaint that the residents raising is a common one that we hear often. The reason for, first, a couple of pointed questions. One, I can't speak to the size requirements of the other towns, but what I can say definitively is that the senior discount for Hoffman Estates is much more competitive than the other towns. Most towns do a discount of 10 to 15% is probably standard. Ours is one-third of the average cost, so it's a 66% discount. It's much more substantial than some of our neighboring communities. We've had a longstanding tradition of doing that, but because of how competitive that pricing is, the program is ripe for abuse and a longstanding policy as part of this program has been to require the smallest toter available, which is the 35-gallon toter as the resident, you know, correctly was reporting. So that's been our policy for a long time. We do get this complaint quite often. I think that in a best effort, it's to try to, we, the village has two costs for waste. One of them is the cost that we have from Groot for services. The other is the tonnage that we drop off at Swank, right? And so trying to minimize some of that waste and, you know, consideration for the lower price is part of that program. But of course, you know, I certainly understand the ask to reconsider that. We do tell residents that you can put separate bags out if you have a heavy week or otherwise as a way to try to still create an opportunity for you to take advantage of the lower price. But it is a substantial concern otherwise, you know, for that to be taken advantage of. Obviously, the concern would be that one person in a household, that's otherwise a full household, taking advantage of that price that it's really not intended to be for.
Can I just address your answer, please?
Sure.
What difference would it make if you have a 35-gallon tote that's full with three bags on the ground or a 65-gallon tote with all six bags in the tote? It's the same amount of garbage. I, I, I just, I don't, I don't understand it. I don't understand. If I have six bags of garbage, if I put half in a tote and half on the ground, you're still picking up six bags of garbage. Plus, if I get all those six bags in the toter, then there's less chance of the skunks and raccoons and who knows what else getting into the garbage and messing up the streets with it. That's, that's what I don't understand.
Mr. O'Malley. Ms. O'Malley.
If you're okay, let us take a look at the issue again, and if you provide your contact information to John, give us a chance to take a look at it and we can get back together and talk.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Now move on to the approval of the minutes. Number one, approval of the minutes of the village board meeting of 5:5, 2025.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any questions on the minutes? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I will abstain from that.
Okay, we noticed the one abstention. And B, village board approval of the 5:12, 2025 special board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
The motion, we have a second. Any discussion on this one? See none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Move on to the omnibus vote. Chair accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. The items on omnibus vote are as follows. A, approval of the agenda. B, approval of the schedule of bills for 5:19, 2025, the amount of $8,154,155.29. C, approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Hoffman Estates Municipal Code, Meetings and Rules of Order. D, approval of an ordinance appointing a director and alternate directors to the solid waste agency of Northern Cook County Swank. E, approval of an ordinance proposing the establishment of a special service area in the village of Hoffman Estates, Illinois, and providing for a public hearing and other related procedures. Special Service Area 2025-1 Kensington Fields. F, request approval of an amendment to licensing, licensed use agreement between the village of Hoffman Estates and Ticketmaster LLC to provide a pricing addendum. G, approval of A, determination of the CDBG CV agreement with Northwest Housing Partnership, NWHP, for the utility and rental assistance project. And B, a CDBG-CV agreement with Clearbrook for HVAC replacements at 1250, 1260 West Higgins Road. We have a motion, we have a second. Does anybody want any of these items pulled? See none, can you call the roll, Madam Clerk?
Trusty Stanton.
Aye.
Trusty Arnett.
Aye.
Trusty Kinnane.
Aye.
Trusty Mills.
Aye.
Trusty Newell.
Aye.
Trusty Palafis.
Aye.
Mayor McLeod.
Aye. Motion carried. We'll move on to reports. President's report. We have a resignation, Carol Pye from the Arts Commission. Chair accept a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. And B, Beth Snyder, appointment to Arts Commission for a term ending April 30, 2027.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Couple of things I'd like to congratulate a neighbor of mine, Samantha Ader, for her new role as District 15 School Board President. Been a great board member, I know she'll make a great president. And you can join the Hoffman Estates Chamber of Commerce in the village for Wine Wednesday at the Hilton Garden Inn on Wednesday, May 21st from 4:30 to 6:30. Event is free to attend, come out and enjoy appetizers, drink specials, conversation, fun. Bring a friend or two, as always, we collect items for our local food pantries. All non-expired donations are welcome. Hilton Garden Inn is located 2425 Barrington Road. This past week, we had on Tuesday, the 13th, a management team meeting, and then we met with the developer, proposed developer, in the afternoon. On Wednesday, there was a swing loose ribbon cutting at Bell Works, very nice event. And had the Northwest Municipal Conference Board of Directors meeting on Wednesday, the 14th also. On Thursday, the 25th, I had a mayor for a day. We had a great time and he enjoyed going through all the departments and having a chance to meet with all the employees. On Friday, we had cop on a rooftop at the very Dunkin' Donuts in town, and I noticed that the Dunkin' Donuts up north contribute more money than any other one. You know, several of us went to that one, so thank you for your generosity.
You're welcome.
And that afternoon, we had the Nothing, Nothing Bunt Cakes ribbon cutting, which they got great stuff there. On Friday, the 16th, or rather Saturday, the 17th, busy day, we had the Seascape Children's Park dedication right next to the swimming pool over there on Moon Lake Boulevard. There really was no park in that area, so it was a much needed improvement and it was just swarming with kids. Followed that, followed by that, by the Kids to Parks Days in Fabrini Park. And at noon, we had the Forest View Animal Hospital ribbon cutting. That's been at Clingspin and Hoffman Estates for many, many years, was on the north side previously. And at 4:30 PM that day, we had Alexis Otto's Eagle Court of Honor in Sheftueltown and Schaumburg. And then on the 18th, we had Rishi Suresh's Eagle Scout Ceremony at Church of the Cross. Thank you for all those who attended. We had a lot of, a lot of folks that were there. And today, we had celebrated Karen Arnett's birthday and the graduation of the Citizens' Fire Academy. Nicely done. And this afternoon, I had a briefing with the County Board President Preckwinkle and the other mayors on what's going on with the county. So that's what I got, and we'll move on to trustee comments. We'll start with trustee Palafis.
Yes, sir. This evening before our meeting, we had an Arts Commission meeting. Summer concerts are beginning very soon, Thursday throughout the summers with the exception of the 3rd of July. So everybody's looking forward to that, and all assignments were handed out. Wanted to also congratulate the, all of the Fire Academy graduates, including two of our esteemed trustees. Way to go, even though it was your second time.
And...
Oh, and Patty, I'm sorry, and our clerk. Also, it was really exciting to hear their testimonials about what they liked and their favorite part of the class. Was also able to stop Friday at three of the four locations. I don't know, Gulf and Barrington's just too far. Like, I don't get to that side of town very much, but the cop on a rooftop, it was fun stopping by there, thanking the police, the explorers, and then some volunteers were at some of them for all the work and the money that they raised. And then happy birthday, Karen Arnett. That's all for me.
Thank you. Trusty Newell.
Okay, quite a few, but here we go. On May 7th, attended the Utility Commission. And the 16th, did the ribbon cutting for Nothing Bunt Cakes, which is out west. Also cop on a rooftop for Special Olympics. Wanted to say thank you to all those that volunteered and for all of those funds that they raised for a great, great cause. So it was a good job to everyone and a beautiful day for it besides. On the 17th, as the mayor had said, we were very busy. We were starting the day out with the Seascape, the park that they had built there with a ribbon cutting. It was amazing that the kids there just had so much fun trying out the new equipment, a park that was really needed for them. So if you don't want to swim, you can go play in the park. Then we went on to Fabrini Park, which they had the kids stay to park, and that too, once again, they were all having such a good time. A little cold and windy out there, but I don't think the temperature bothered them. We moved on to the Forest View ribbon cutting, which was the veterinary clinic, which is on the south end by Gulf and Barrington. And then later that day, Eagle Scout Auto. On the 18th, we did the Eagle Scout Suresh. Wanted to say congrats to the Citizen Fire Academy graduates. Thank you to the chief, to all the fire people that had taken time to teach us what they do 24/7 to keep us all safe. And then belated birthday wishes to trustee Arnett. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Trusty Mills.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend all these events that everybody's talking about. I'm sorry about that. But I will say, I drove by that new kids park by Seascape late in the afternoon, and my goodness, it was jammed with kids and families. So I think that's going to be a great hit in the area there. I want to send congratulations to the Fire Academy graduates. I give you great thanks for getting involved with the village events as you did, and I think it gives everyone a better appreciation. Belated birthday wishes to Karen Arnett. And one thing, today on Channel 9 News, in the morning on their around town, they were highlighting that new game night out over at Bell Works to the public, so I think it's going to attract a lot of people, and it looked like a fun place to be. That's it for today.
Thank you. You're right about that park at Seascape. They got a grant from trustee, Representative Crespo.
Yeah.
I still miss him at the village board, but now it's Representative Crespo, and that helped them be able to do that, so thank you. Trusty Stanton.
Thank you. Let's go back to May 7th. I was able to attend the ribbon cutting for the game night out at Bell Works. And then on the 9th of May, I was, the mayor and I attended the open house honoring Barrington's outgoing village president, Karen Darch. On the 14th of May, I attended the swing loose ribbon cutting at Bell Works. On the 16th, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Nothing Bunt Cakes at 4611 West Higgins, which is next to Rook's. On the 17th, I attended the Seascape Children's Park Dedication. And then I attempted to attend the Kids to Parks Day ceremony at Fabrini Park, but it started without me. I got there at 10:55 and I was told by the mayor as he was heading out that it already had happened.
You know, artistic, wasn't me there.
It's, I always am trying to be there on time, but apparently, everybody else wants to rush ahead. Anyway, later that afternoon, I did attend the ribbon cutting for the first, the Forest Video, Forest View, I'm sorry, Animal Hospital at 2547 West Gulf Road. And then on the 18th, I was able to attend the Rishi Suresh Eagle Court of Honor ceremony. And today, I was also able to attend the Citizen Fire Academy graduation and congratulations to all those that actually went through the program. That's it.
Thank you. Trusty Arnett.
Thank you. Also was able to help out with the cop on the rooftop. Chief colleague, Officer Ortiz, outstanding job with her coordination, just outstanding job she did this year and last year as well. This year, I think she really outdid herself from last year, especially with the amounts we were able to raise this year for Special Olympics. Just kudos to her for everything that she's done. I know she's picked up a lot of the stuff that Commander Bennet used to do. So she did just an outstanding job and so much fun working with her and her cadets. But just my hats off to her. It was so much fun working with her. Also on the 17th, I'm going to echo trustee Newell except for the Eagle, or the Eagle Court of Honor later on that afternoon. Also on the 18th, I was able to attend that Eagle Court of Honor for Rishi Suresh. Congratulations to him. Tonight, able to attend the CFA graduation with all my counterparts. Chief Wax, another outstanding academy for you and the fire department. Congratulations, and we'll look forward to the one for next year. And that is all I have, and thank you all for the birthday wishes. Greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Trusty Kinnane.
Do you want to take a break before I start?
No, go ahead.
Okay. On May 6th, I volunteered at Our Lady of Angels Mission in Chicago, where we provided food to almost 500 families. On the 8th, I did donations pickups in various pantries, did donations pickups and delivered to various pantries throughout the city of Chicago. After that, I volunteered at Father Romero's Outdoor Pantry at 24th and Kedzie in Little Village. On the 8th, I attended the CAC Wonder Event at the Now Arena. On the 8th, I attended a Knights of Columbus Business Meeting, where I was able to get approved a scholarship for one of the postulants at Our Lady of Angels, which she is very happy. On the 9th, I attended the Harper College Groundbreaking for a New Business Center. On the 12th, I completed donations pickups throughout the west side of Chicago, delivered to Our Lady of Angels Mission. On the 12th, volunteered at Our Lady of Angels Mission and facilitated pantry prep work and cleaning on the, I got these dates wrong, so. But anyway, going back, on the, on May 10th, I participated in a Knights of Columbus Honor Guard for Communions at St. Hubert's Church. On the 13th, I volunteered at Our Lady of Angels, providing the community with food. We fed about 486 families. On the 14th, I attended a ribbon cutting for the swing loose golf at Bell Works. On the 14th, I attended a Schaumburg Regional Airport Commission meeting at the Schaumburg Airport. On the 16th, I attended the ribbon cutting for Nothing Bunt Cakes at 4611 West Higgins Road. On the 17th, I attended the New Park Dedication at Moon Lake Park. On the 17th, I attended Kids Day at the park, at Fabrini Park. On the 17th, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Forest View Animal Hospital at 2547 West Gulf Road. On the 17th, I attended an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Alexis Otto. On the 18th, I attended an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Rishi Suresh. Today, on the 19th, I completed donations pickups throughout the west side of Chicago and delivered to Our Lady of Angels Mission. And last but not least, I attended the Citizens Fire Academy graduation ceremony at the village hall tonight, and congratulations to all those graduates, and thank you, mayor.
Thank you, trustee Kinnane. Move on to 6C Village Manager Report, Manager O'Malley.
No report, mayor.
Okay. Village Clerk's report. Clerk Richter.
Yes, in the month of April, the Clerk's Office processed 28 passports and responded to 257 FOIA requests. They also processed over 1,000 business license renewals and 100 liquor license renewals. So busy month for Clerk's Office.
Seemed like more than 1,000 as I was sending them. Good job. Move on to committee reports. Finance, trustee Palafis.
Yes, sir. Hold on. Bringing it up really quick. No, I just got into a different place of the document. Yeah, I'll take it. I'll be faster than finding.
I'm not allowed to report.
So, yeah, I really actually didn't need it. Anyway, so June 2nd, we'll call it to order and establish quorum with a roll call. As for the approval of minutes, we'll solicit a public comment. If any old business, new business, there's nothing at this time, the three reports will be received and filed. The president's report, mayor, if you have any updates, no items to review, nothing and other yet, and then we'll adjourn.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, trustee Mills.
Public Health and Safety will be meeting immediately after Finance Committee, and we also have a very quick agenda. We'll call it to order, approve minutes, have public comments. There is no old business and there is no new business. We will then accept the various reports, Police Department, Health and Human Services, Emergency Management, and the Fire Department. If the president has anything else to report, and we will be adjourned.
Thank you, trustee Mills. Public Works and Utilities, trustee Newell.
Okay, on June 2nd, following Public Health and Safety...
Okay, on June 2nd, following Public Health and Safety, we will have the Public Work and Utility Committee, we will call to order and have a roll call. We will do approval of minutes, public comment, if there is any, nothing under old business and under new business, we have four items. A is authorization to ward a contract for Fire Station 24, Chiller Replacement to Moultrie Mechanical LLC, which is out of Wonder Lake, Illinois, and the lowest qualified bidder for an amount not to exceed $78,970. B, authorization to ward contract two, and that will be decided shortly, out of Illinois, for the 2025 fire hydrant purchase in an amount not to exceed to be determined. C, authorization to approve change order number one for Sanitarium Storm Sword televising and devaluation with American Underground Incorporated, which is out of Glenview, Illinois, in an amount not to exceed $11,226.48. D, authorization to ward contract to perform a public works base needs study to firm, which will be, to be determined, also with the location to be determined, in an amount not to exceed, which will also be determined in the near future. Reports, we will have the Public Works Department monthly report, Engineering Division monthly report, President's Report, if he wishes to add anything, nothing in items in review or other, and then we will adjourn.
Thank you, trustee Newell.
Thank you.
We got 6F, Treasurers Report, anybody have any questions for the Treasurers Report that was submitted by Reverend Treasurer Stan Helverson? Any questions? See none, this will be received and filed. Move on to seven, Planning and Zoning Commission Recommendations, Chairperson Combs. Good evening.
Planning and Zoning Commission do not recommend an ordinance granting a variance from Section 9-3-6-D of the Municipal Code to permit a corner side yard setback for a storage shed to be four feet instead of the minimum permitted, 15 feet for the property located at 760 Orange Lane. It was unanimous, the petitioner was asking to build a 150 square foot shed that would be 12 foot tall in the corner of their lot. We had several complaints from people in the neighborhood. Two of them were the neighbors on either side objecting to safety concerns because it's a curve and there's a school right there, and it will block the view, they thought, of the traffic at that corner, and also would depreciate the value of their property.
Thank you, the ordinance we passed earlier in the day, does that, does that take effect immediately? Corporation Council, junior?
Which one is again, I'm sorry?
The ordinance we passed earlier, did that go into effect immediately regarding the Planning and Zoning Commission reports?
We have to look at the ordinance.
What did we pass?
What is that in the ordinance?
We have it.
Whether it says it's effective immediately or not.
I thought it was 48 hours. No, let me give it to you. We just passed an ordinance early in the day, the question is, does it apply immediately or does it have to wait?
We just hold it on this?
Yeah.
I think it has to wait until the, normally, after the ordinance is published.
Okay, so this will be under the old rules of the old yes/no votes, right? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
This will go back to what we've done in the past with the yes, with the negative recommendation, we end up having the yes/no votes all the time? This goes back to this one until that one is published?
Well, it depends on how you wish to, I'm sorry. It depends on how you want to wish, how you wish to state the motion. And if you wish to state the motion as a application for a variance that was denied by the zoning board, to approve that, you can vote yes if you want to approve it, no if you don't.
Yes if you want to approve the shed.
You do or do not.
Well, yeah, so the negative recommendation, if we follow that, we would go to, if you wanted to allow the shed, you'd vote yes, if you didn't want to allow it, you'd vote no, is that correct?
No. No, you have to do the motion in the affirmative, and then if you don't, then you would approve the affirmative if you wanted it.
Okay.
That would be underneath the new.
You're supposed to make motions in the affirmative normally.
You don't have to, that was what we discussed.
I was going to say, we never have in the past.
What's the agenda item, sorry?
Well, we've gotten an email too this past week on that whole purpose of how to do it.
So, the matter before the board is an ordinance granting a variance from Section 9-3-6D of the Municipal Code to permit a corner side yard setback for a storage shed to be four feet instead of the minimum permitted, 15 feet for the property located at 760 Orange Lane. That is what's before the board. If you wish to grant that variance, it would be a yes vote. If you wish to deny that variance, it would be a no vote. There's a notation that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended a denial. Okay, they recommend a denial.
And it was unanimous.
However, what is before this board is the variance. And the motion is an ordinance granting the variance. So if you wish to grant the variance and have it four foot, the vote would be yes. And if you wish not to grant an audience, the vote, the variance, the vote would be no. That is the matter that is before the board. The recommendation of the zoning board is not before the board. You're not voting on the recommendation, you're voting on the variance. So, yes, four feet, no, 15 feet.
Okay.
And this ordinance, it doesn't matter. That's the motion, and that's how we read it, and it's in the affirmative.
Okay. So if you want to approve it, make a motion yes, if you want to vote, could be against it, you vote no on that, obviously, so, chair would accept a motion.
Before that, judge.
We're reverting.
I do have a question. The four feet is actually right by the sidewalk, isn't it? Is that where they want the proposal? Yeah, and this is a corner lot, and while we're talking about it as a side, it's really a front as well of the house. It looks like it's to the side because of the way the house is shaped, but it's also part of the front of the yard.
Well, the house is on an angle.
Right.
It's a corner lot, and it's kind of a little curvy right there.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, trustee Palafas.
Was the petitioner the person that was here that left?
I don't know.
So there's no petitioner here?
Apparently not, unless the chief is the petitioner. No, she isn't.
Just want to make sure.
So, someone want to make a motion?
I'm lost.
I'll make a motion that we uphold the findings of the zoning board.
That's not what he just said.
I know.
The motion, the motion as put in the ordinance is to approve the variance, that's the motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the variance.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. This is a departure from the yes/no stuff. If you want the shed approved, to vote yes, if you don't want it, to vote no. Any further discussion? See none, you want to call the role madam clerk?
Trustee Stanton.
Nay.
Trustee Arnett.
No.
Trustee Kinnane.
Nay.
Trustee Mills.
No.
Trustee Newell.
No.
Trustee Palafas.
No.
Mayor McLeod.
No.
Motion to prove the ordinance is denied. Okay, thank you, Chairperson Combs. Hopefully, that'll become clear from that one, what we're doing here. Is there any additional business, Manager O'Malley? Okay, in that case, the chair would accept a motion adjourned.
So moved.
We have a motion for a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.
I'll take that.